Magna Lopez? Is Magna Lopez here?
Yes. I will be speaking on behalf of Magna Lopez. Because of some current events that occurred, she's not able to attend. I will be reading the testimony for Magna Lopez. As she is, due to current events, unable to attend in person. She is also a neighbor of mine with the same landlord. "I have been residing at 376 63rd Street, Brooklyn, for almost six years. My limited interaction with the landlord, Delvis Valdez, has not been pleasant. There has been an extensive history of this landlord continuously being petitioned to appear in housing court for noncompliance to court orders for repairs. Furthermore, Delvis Valdez has been fined continuously due to the violations. My husband initially took him to court for the repairs for dilapidated windows back in 2011, which he did finally fix. My husband again had no other recourse and went to housing court yet again in 2016 due to the current repairs we requested but were never acknowledged by our landlord. Even with a court order and under par repairs, it took months to happen in which his unlicensed workers put in the wrong outlets and we're still waiting for them to finish all of our reasonable requests to date. Therefore, my husband and I are being forced to go to housing court once again to petition the landlord for violating the initial court order for lack of repairs. This is very frustrating for us since we have to take days off from work and spend the entire day in housing court to no avail. Due to Mr. Valdez's cavalier behavior, he refuses to follow the mandatory court order repairs in a timely, organized process. All these are some of the valid and very serious reasons, in our opinion, that we strongly feel there should be no rent increases. We need to start teaching these landlords that if they choose not to obey the law, they will be penalized." Another unfortunate and very sad valid point as to why these rent increases should not happen is due to work wages. The truth is that our work wages in New York City are not enough to be kept to keep up with the rents and many other expenses. We implore you to please consider our statement in this matter to not increase the rent. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcela Matinas?
Hello? Good evening. My name is Marcela Matinas and I am a displaced and rent-stabilized tenant. I lost my apartment to something that I didn't know was happening: gentrification. Since then, since 2008, I've been coming before this board and testifying. Since 2008, I've been asking for a zero increase. But now, more than ever, we need a rent rollback. I was a rent-stabilized tenant. Now, I am a tenant advocate and organizer for Neighbors Helping Neighbors. I am a board member for Tenant PAC and I am the chair of the Housing Committee for CB7 in Sunset Park. I've learned a lot. One thing that I'm always hearing year after year is that property owners don't make a lot of money. They're operating at a loss year after year. That they need money to cover the costs. I don't know anyone else who would continue to take a loss. Why don't they sell these properties and buy something with less restrictions? I'll tell you why. Because rent-stabilized apartments are a goldmine. They are considered underdeveloped assets because if you can get the long-term tenant who's paying low income out, then you can make a profit. You've heard about the property owner, Delvis Valdez. He owns various properties. Gladima Realty and Delima Realty are just two of them. I am currently working in just five of his buildings, but I can tell you an example of one. This is a building that he claims was substantially rehabilitated. Well, guess what? As you've heard before, this substantial rehabilitation happened without licensed workers and without any permits. A tenant in his building was able to fight and won the right to stay. However, he left because he was harassed. This property owner is also the litigating attorney for these properties. So not only is he the person that the tenants complain to about repairs, not only is he the person that collects his rent, but he is also the person litigating for their eviction. 51245th Street is a building that he is claiming that has been substantially rehabilitated. Despite losing that case on those grounds where the city found that it was in fact rent-stabilized, a few months later, he again submitted false information on court documents to attempt to evict further tenants. This is just one example of one property owner in Sunset Park. And as you've heard the tenants mention before, he is also running for city council.
Excuse me, your time is up. Could you wind up your presentation, please?
Consider this: New York City is what it is because of its diversity. If we lose the folks that are here, if we lose the working class, New York City will not continue to be what it is. I am asking you to follow your moral compass and vote the right way. Vote for the tenants of New York City. Vote to keep them in their home and vote for a rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Kiki Valentine, Joanna Lane, and Abigail Martinez.
Hello. Good evening. I'll try to make this really fast because I have a three-year-old and my iPhone is dying and he's watching Curious George. My name's Kiki Valentine. I'm a rent-stabilized tenant in Red Hook, Brooklyn, where square footage is like $171 a square foot, but my landlord sold my building to his son for $325,000. Figure that out. I'm here today not for me because I have a rent freeze. Because I was smart enough to go through DHCR when I was not given a rent-stabilized lease when I moved in in 2008 and kept begging and asking and pushing for one. I represented myself pro se in housing court for five years. I did not get an esquire after my name, nor did I get a jurist doctor. I maintain that I was able to get my rent-stabilized lease after this. My son has succession rights to my lease, so I win. I have a rent freeze. Everyone else doesn't. If you have not spent a day in housing court at 171 Livingston Street, please, just go on your lunch break. Look at the long line of people there who will be losing their home. I've sat here tonight crying over some of these stories because I know firsthand what is going on. I'm gonna go through my notes quickly. I never got a rent-stabilized lease or a DHCR rider. That's illegal. Greg O'Connell is my landlord. He owns everything in Red Hook, but now Estate 4 does, which is a Milan company. Greg's other tenants, Michelle Williams, actress; Michael Shannon, actor; Dustin Yellen, artist; those people have, they had electricity two days after Hurricane Sandy. I had electricity two months after Hurricane Sandy. In fact, I didn't even go home. I worked in a medical shelter at the Park Slope Armory taking care of elderly evacuees from Rockaway instead of being in my house and working in a restaurant until four in the afternoon, I'm sorry, from four to 11:00, and then from midnight to 8:00 a.m. I worked in a shelter, cutting people's toenails because nurses are not allowed to. So, I filed all my DHCR stuff. The important thing for me today about this rent increase is that my heat is not, I have to pay for my own electric baseboard heat. So my rent is stabilized, but in the winter for six months, I have to pay $1,000, up to $1,000 extra each month to Con Edison for my heat. It's electric baseboard. It's either on or off. There's no thermostat because the landlord illegally took out our boiler. So, you know, I'm here because there's so many things. He signed my name on a lease and submitted to DHCR and it was forged. He forged my name. This is just one landlord out of so many landlords who get away with so much. And these tenants are not affluent, white, educated, young women who can advocate for themselves. And that's why I'm here today speaking and I ask you to please make the decision to roll this back for the elderly people, disabled people, people who do not speak English and are immigrants, and also the people affected by today's administration decision to cut back on Social Security and Medicaid. Because the people who live in low-income housing are on Medicaid and take advantage of social services. Thank you so much and please do what's right. Please.
Thank you. Joanna Lane?
Hi, my name is Raphael Ruttnerberg. I'll be testifying on behalf of Joanna Lane. She's a colleague of mine. I'm an attorney with Brooklyn Legal Services Corporation A. We're a legal services organization and we serve the neighborhoods of Ocean Hill, Cypress Hills, Brownsville, East New York, many other parts of Brooklyn besides. About a year ago, you may know, there was a rezoning along a corridor of East New York. And since that has happened, within this past year, that neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods have seen the fruits of that rezoning. And what that means is that the tenants of those very poor, low-income, working-class neighborhoods have seen a maelstrom of harassment by the landlords in those neighborhoods aimed at getting them out of those neighborhoods. This includes construction has harassment. This includes pure, simple, race-based, sex-based harassment, you name it. It runs the gamut. And the whole point is to clear those neighborhoods out so landlords can get new people in those buildings and turn a profit. Now, if it's within the purview of this board to consider tenant affordability, then I beseech you to think about neighborhoods that have recently been rezoned or are about to be rezoned and the impact that this will have on the people in those neighborhoods. Thank you. And please, roll back the rent or freeze the rent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Abigail Martinez?
Good evening. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Abigail Martinez. Yo vengo en el grupo de vecinos ayudando vecinos. Mi nombre es Abigail Martinez y vengo con el grupo vecinos ayudando vecinos. Me mudé al apartamento 680 53 St. en Sunset Park en el 2014, con mi esposo y mis cuatro hijos, de edad de dos años a once años. Entrepagando $2,200 de renta, tenía ayuda con un compañero de cuarto y pagaba $1,200 de renta. Cuando se fue el compañero de cuarto, perdí mi ayuda y fui a buscar ayuda con vecinos ayudando vecinos. Aprendí que mi apartamento era de renta estabilizada y que tengo derechos. Cuando recibí mi historial de renta, descubrí que el dueño reportó al estado que yo estaba pagando $643.50 y el inquilino anterior pagaba $588.89. Aprendí que podría pedir una investigación con el estado para determinar la renta legal en lo que espero la decisión del estado. Yo tengo que seguir pagando $2,200 de renta. Mi casero no hace mantenimiento ni reparaciones al apartamento, ni al edificio. Incluso está haciendo construcciones sin permiso del Departamento de Edificios y le dieron violaciones. En el sótano él tiene personas viviendo. También se pone a jugar y a tomar hasta tarde, que resulta en peleas. Que tenemos que llamar a la policía. Mi casero no merece un aumento de renta ya que me está sobrecargando y hace cosas ilegales. La renta que pago me da derecho a recibir servicios que mi casero ignora. Mi esposo es el único que trabaja y estamos apretados de renta. Gracias.
Thank you.
My name is Abigail Martinez and I'm from Neighbors Helping Neighbors. I moved to my apartment at 680 53rd Street in Sunset Park in 2014 with my husband and my four children, ages ranging from two to 11 years old. I paid $2,200 for rent and I had a roommate who paid $1,200 for part of the rent. When my roommate left, I lost that support and so I needed to look for help. So I went to Neighbors Helping Neighbors and I found out that my apartment is actually rent-stabilized and that I have rights. When I reviewed the rent history for my apartment, I found out that the landlord was telling the state that I paid $643.50 for rent and that the previous tenant paid $588.89 a month. I found out that I could ask for an investigation from the state to determine what the real legal rent actually is. And while I wait for that decision, I have to continue paying the $2,200 monthly rent. Then my landlord doesn't maintain the apartment and doesn't do any repairs in the building. And he was also doing construction without permits from the department, the Buildings Department, and he has received violations. In the basement, he has people living there. They also play around and drink a lot really late at night and then we have to call the police. My landlord does not deserve this increase because he's actually overcharging me and does illegal things. The rent that I pay gives me the right to get services, but my landlord ignores me and my husband right now is the only one that's working and rent is really, really difficult to pay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Jennifer Berkley, Andrea Shapiro, and Theodore Brook.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jen Berkley. I'm actually a candidate for city council in District 40, which includes Dipmouth Park, East Flatbush, Flatbush, Prospect Lefferts Gardens, Kensington, and parts of Crown Heights. I'm also a longtime tenant advocate and thank you for listening this evening. My neighborhood, and a lot of my neighbors have left due to the late hour, but I'm here for them and that's the same reason that I'm running. My neighborhood has been losing rent-regulated units at an alarming rate now. Central Brooklyn, so many people have just been priced out that my area is now the new frontier and middle and working-class people are dying to get an apartment in this neighborhood because they're still affordable. At the same time, landlords see this as an opportunity to get long-term tenants out by hiking up the rents, you know the story, renovating the units and removing them, usually illegally, from the rent stabilization program. We need to do whatever possible to maintain what's left of our rent-stabilized housing stock and the increase being proposed this year just won't do it. Voters in my district that I've been talking to as I've been going door-to-door are begging you to, once again, vote for a rollback, sorry, once again, vote for a rent freeze or consider a rollback. This would continue to help families stay in their homes, many seniors and families with small children who rely on these affordable rents. I hear the same story every single day. I'm out talking with tenants and their neighbors in the community. Please keep the 32,216 units in my district from losing their rent stabilization affordability status when you vote next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Shapiro?
Hello and good evening. My name is Andrea Shapiro. I'm the program manager and member organizer at the Met Council on Housing and a lifelong resident of Brooklyn. At the Met Council, I run our tenants' rights hotline and clinic. We answered just over 3,500 questions from tenants last year, with half those being rent-stabilized and the vast majority of them women. You have heard from tenants, advocates, and about statistics, about the half of New Yorkers who are rent-burdened. What has been presented is about New Yorkers who use roommates to afford rent. It's a cliche to talk about young people living in New York City with multiple roommates, but we hear more and more about people in their 40s, 50s, 60s, and even 70s needing roommates to afford their rent-stabilized apartments. According to the American Community Survey, 9.5% of renters in New York are living with a non-family member. That's over 200,000 New Yorkers. Many of these roommates live together happily, but increasingly, each year, we hear from situations that have gone wrong. Tenants are forced to take in roommates because they can't afford anything else. They are forced to take on whoever they can get. This leads to violent and abusive relationships. Every time the rent goes up, it is harder for people to remove themselves from these relationships. This does not even get into the start about how rent increases force people to stay intimate partner violent relationships. All the things you hear about from intimate partner violence, emotional manipulation, forced isolation, and physical violence, we hear about between roommates. There are no good options for the tenants who call us. They can call Adult Protective Services, APS, the police, or do a roommate eviction. Each option is worse than the next and can often lead to the prime tenant being evicted as well. Even if they are able to stay in their apartment, they are often forced back into abusive situations, again, because they simply cannot afford their rent without a roommate. On June 27th, when you vote to raise the rent, you're a culpable party to this abusive relationship. By raising the rent, you are forcing people to stay in abusive relationships and you are helping force people into new abusive relationships with their roommates. Vote your conscience on the 27th. Vote protect vulnerable tenants and vote for a rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you. Theodore Brook? You went home? Okay. The next three speakers are Am Goodrich, Samantha Lyons, and Rosario Diaz.
Good evening, brothers and sisters. How you feeling tonight? That's right, because I did it all time. We need to fight what is right. So let me be clear. So on behalf of Crown Heights Attorney Union and also my colleague AA Fox, who wasn't being able to speak out tonight, but I want to show them on behalf of them, because they in another event, they were the so-called Bedford Union Armory thing. So time and time again, it's been like 14 years, ever since, we have over 61,000 homeless families, including children, sleeping in a shelter every single night. They ain't right. Because that happened, all because of the slums, slum lords tried to take away these rent-stabilized apartments, rent control, even to C.C. citizens, our veterans, even to the handicapped, people with wheelchairs, are again being priced out for being gentrified in our neighborhoods. You're here for Balm Hill. You're here for Green, downtown Brooklyn. You had William Burke, Greenpoint, even the Bushwick. So it flappers at Crown Heights. Do you know what neighborhood that happened next to get gentrified? East New York and Coney Island. That's the recipe for disgracement. We need to move our immigration status, but this is gonna happen, it's gonna time and time again. We had enough with this bill class system. And of course, we're the 99% that try to fight back. Everything was right. So come next week, we will roll, you even roll back the rent and we will shut you down.
Samantha Lyons?
Good evening. Hi, my name is Samantha Lyons. I'm a housing attorney at Catholic Migration Services, where people come to me for help staying in their homes or for repairs to make their homes livable. As someone who regularly works with tenants from all walks of life, so seniors, families with children, immigrants, the disabled, I'm standing here in front of you tonight to tell you that it's critically important for this city and for our stabilized tenants for a rent rollback or a rent freeze. This is not just a question about landlords' profits. It's about the safety, stability, vibrancy, and well-being of our families and our communities. And it's about the right to have a home as a sanctuary and a right to live with dignity, which so many of our tenants do not have because they cannot afford a place to live. The wonderful low and moderate income tenants I work with are working two to three jobs to provide for their families and to keep their children safe and clothed and in school. And even when they're working two or three jobs, they're paying way more than 30% of their income on rent. And they live in constant fear of being evicted, who I spend every weekday with, of being evicted for not being able to afford their rents and for arbitrary fees imposed by landlords that a lot of our tenants don't know are illegal or that they don't have to pay. We have one tenant, a client, who came to see us and when we asked him, he's an elderly man, I think he's about 85, and when we saw how much his rent was, we said, "How do you pay this rent?" And he said, "Oh, you know, I don't eat Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday." And he just, it was just a statement. It was like, "That's what I have to do to pay my rent." And it is heartbreaking and is not fair. There is no legal remedy for not being able to afford a place to live. I can't, I literally can do nothing about that. You guys can. And I stand here before you, asking you tonight to implore you for a rent rollback or a rent freeze because the lives and well-being of our communities and so many of our residents are really at stake. And I, from the bottom of my heart, as an attorney who does this every day, believe that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosario Diaz? I think we need a Spanish interpreter, please?
Okay. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rosario Diaz. Mi nombre es Rosario Diaz. Vivo en 430 de la 61. Hallo? Hallo? Mi nombre es Rosario Diaz. Vivo en el 430 de la 61 St. en Brooklyn. Pertenezco al grupo de vecinos ayudando vecinos y miembro activa de la Unión 1199. Tengo diez años trabajando de jónjeel, ganando a 11 dólares la hora. Anteriormente, contré aumento de 25 a 50 centavos. Mi renta actual es de 1,576 dólares. Con todo lo que gano, cuento para pagar comida, electricidad, y teléfono. Y cuando uno me alcanza, mis hijos me ayudan. Le pido a la miembra de la junta que representa a los trabajadores de la Unión 1199, que como yo, hay muchos miembros de la unión que no van a poder pagar el aumento. Y están en peligro de perder su hogar. En nombre de todos mis compañeros de la unión, hacemos la petición de no aumentar porque es su deber como representante velar por los miembros de la unión. Lo que más me hace sentir mal es de mi casera, al igual que a toda la persona del edificio, es que ella no discrimina y nos hace sentir como si no fuéramos personas humanas. Otra cosa que hace es que hizo un contrato con diferente cantidad de renta en abril. Me llegó un nuevo contrato donde ella me aumentó 600 dólares en un solo aumento. La dueña está reclamando que puso todo nuevo, nada nuevo. Yo le pido a ustedes desde mi corazón que tomen encuentro a nuestra situación, si no tendremos que dejar nuestro hogar, nuestro apartamento, e irnos a la calle. Gracias por tomarse su tiempo para escucharlo. Buenas noches.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rosario Diaz. I live at 430 64th Street, Apartment C in Brooklyn, New York, 11220. I am with Neighbors Helping Neighbors and I've been an active union member of 1199. I've been a home health aide for 10 years and started earning $11 an hour and I've had three increases from 25 up to 50 cents. My rent now is $1,576 and with what I earn, and this is what I earn, and I pay for my food, my gas, my electricity, my telephone, and when I don't have enough, my children help me. I ask the member of the board who represents workers from the Union 1199 that there's a lot of people like me in the union that aren't able to pay, that aren't gonna be able to pay this increase and they are in danger of losing their homes. And in behalf of all of my peers from 1199, we petition and we ask you to... And in behalf of all of my peers from 1199, we petition and we ask you to make, to not increase the rent, and it is your job and your task as a representative to look after the members of the union. What, what I feel the worst about is that our landlord discriminates against us and makes us feel less human. The other thing that my landlord did was, he changed the, he increased my rent. In April, I received a new lease where she increased my rent by 600 dollars in just one increase. The landlord is claiming to have made renovations, but there's nothing that's new. So I ask you, from the bottom of my heart, to really think about our situation, or else we're gonna have to end up leaving our homes and end up in the street. Thank you for taking the time to hear me, and have a good evening.
Thank you. The next speakers are Rolando Guzman, Ricky Rivera, and Gordon Lee. Rolando Guzman? Ricky Rivera? Hi, could we have your name, please?
Mr. Gordon Lee Antonio, but you can also call me Greg, because some people aren't good with the name Gordon. I'm a rent-controlled tenant.
Could you speak up a little bit and closer to the microphone so we can hear you?
My landlord is Shankoh, again. Oh, shit. Yeah, again, my name is Gordon Lee Antonio, but Greg will also do, some people have trouble with the name Gordon. Again, my landlord is Shankoh. I lived in my apartment for about 30 to 35 years, and what I like about living in my neighborhood is, well, I like cute gardens, and I, I like the woods of Prospect Park, and I like to take few minute, a few hour vacations by just simply taking walks and traveling to different neighborhoods, villages, townships, et cetera. Now, what's been happening in my building, one of the reasons why I don't think landlords deserve a rent increase is, well, we don't get much service, a little bit we get, it's not good. One of the problems in my building is we had several bed bug incidents. They need to spray outside, and they don't spray outside, because that's where the bugs are coming from outside, you know? But they just do it inside, where just create more problems and load of inconveniences. Also, you know, there's no accommodation for physically disabled persons. We're faced with MCIs, including air conditioning fees, and our ceiling, especially our sink, our kitchen sink and bathroom sink leaked several times, because, and this has happened for years. There's a woman who lives upstairs who always lets her appliance to sink and bathtub overflow. She was never disciplined, and when we speak to her, she literally says it's no big deal. And she and the landlords are in on it together, in my opinion, and and I think all this is because the landlord is trying to get us to leave. And I don't think rent, renting, we should get a rent rollback, because what we have to pay now is unrealistic, much less a rent increase. If the landlords can raise rent whenever they want, as much as they want, you know, it's an unrealistic rate for us to pay, and they don't deserve a rent increase. And what we sacrifice paying the higher rent we pay now is, we sacrifice our other bills, money for food, car fare, and we sacrifice money to pay our medical bills if the feds remove our Medicaid and our Medicare.
Excuse me, your, your time is up. Could you wind up your presentation, please?
All right. I just want to wind up by thanking you for listening. And just to briefly state, what I would do if I didn't have to pay such a high rent, I would buy a Mets ticket to go to Citi Field to see a Mets game, because I'm a Mets fan. I'd take few hour vacations to Suffolk County and upstate New York, and I'd, and if I didn't have to pay such high rent, I'd also get tablets and phones for Windows 10 iOS to use it for my Quest 500 computer. But I learned to give it up, because I could never afford it. I'm a low-income person, rent is so high, so I learned to give it up. I know that I'll never have those things.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Phil Smack, Landry Herrman, and Jose Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name, my name is Phil Smack. I'm a 29-year resident of a rent-stabilized apartment on the north side of Williamsburg and a proud member of the Met Council on Housing. Question I have for you guys is, how do you do it? I mean, we come up here, people are telling you the rents, we don't have money for the rents, we can't afford the rents, it's the same story over and over again. At the same time, you have the landlords who want to get as much rent as they can. I'd like to just share a very quick story with you. Last week, I was camped outside Governor Cuomo's office, you know, imploring on him to, you know, strengthen the rent laws, and a woman came up to me, and she said, "What's going on here? What are you guys doing?" I said, "Well, we're, we're standing, we're standing outside the governor's office here to try to strengthen the rent laws." And she goes, "Yeah? Well, are you homeless?" I said, "No, I've got a home." "Well, you're not homeless. What's the problem?" And I said, "Well, we're trying to strengthen the rent law so we don't end up being homeless." And she said, "Well, let me tell you something." She goes, "I lost my apartment because of that guy," and she just walked away carrying a suitcase, which was her apartment behind her. And you know what she said to me? She said, "You can't blame the landlords." And you know what? She's right. You can't blame the landlords. Of course, they want to get as much money as they possibly can. Listen, I live in a rent-stabilized building, there are six units in that building. A new owner came in, bought the three little buildings like that for 16 million dollars, renovated four of the buildings in my apartment, took these little 500 square foot apartments that were renting for a couple hundred dollars, and now they're renting for 3,800 dollars a month. Listen, folks, here's what I want to ask you. All I'm asking you for is your integrity. You know, don't vote for who's ever mandated you to be here and carry out whatever it is that they want. You have the facts in front of you. All we have are you. That's all we have. And all I'm saying is, if you can look at those facts and make an honest, integrity-based decision, I will accept and honor your decision. I'm not asking for an increase, I'm not asking for a decrease, I'm asking for your honest integrity that you were brought into this world with. Thank you.
Thank you. Landry Herrman?
We do, we do need a rollback. I was gonna end on that, but might as well just go with the wave, so to speak. Hi, my name's Landry Harmon. I am a volunteer with the Met Council on Housing, which is a wonderful organization, the oldest tenants' union continuous in New York City, as old as my mom, but I won't say her age. And what I do with, with that council is I work on the Tenants Rights Hotline, which is an amazing resource in New York. And, you know, it's, it's not unlike what you're experiencing right now, where when I am working the hotline, I'm fielding people's questions and I'm listening to their stories. And, you know, the story is exactly what you've been hearing. It's tenant harassment, construction harassment, landlord posturing, illegal rent increases, illegal destabilizations of apartments, and, you know, tenants not knowing what their rights are, because their landlords are going out of their way to, you know, confuse them, to exploit their ignorance. And it's, 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 for lack of a better term, criminal, what they're doing. They're, they're behaving like criminals. These landlords are criminals. They are criminally negligent, you know, and it's, 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 it's the tenants who suffer for that. And I don't really think it's right to give these criminals a raise when us tenants aren't getting COLA raises. I make less now this year than I did last year because of my health increase costs, even though I got a 2% raise. Like, I don't know, why should, why should landlords get that? So basically, yeah, I don't know, it's on you. When landlords, when their businesses go bunk, they can fall back on like the cost of their apartments, they can sell their multimillion dollar apartments. When tenants go bunk, because they can't afford their rents anymore, they go on the streets, and we know that last year, 43% of newly homeless people came out of rent-stabilized apartments. So, you know, the homeless people this year who come out of rent-stabilized apartments, I hope they'll be on your consciousness, so, or conscience, sorry.
Is Jose Rodriguez here? Okay. The next three speakers are Rabia Gull, Jimmy Lopez, and Raphael Rutenberg.
My name is Bridgette Malali, and this is...
And I'm Rabia Gull.
We are tenant attorneys at Boom Health Legal Services in the Bronx. We missed the meeting in the Bronx sadly, but we're very appreciative to be here tonight. Our clients are at risk for eviction, and they're rent stabilized, and most of them are in rent-stabilized apartments, the majority of our clients. And most of them are at risk for eviction because they fell on hard times. A majority of our clients are families, living paycheck to paycheck, like most of us. Maybe their child got sick, or maybe they lost their job, but in all of my cases, I've witnessed hardworking, hopeful individuals that are just trying to survive. I've also witnessed landlords taking advantage of my clients with different types of illegal rent overcharges and shoddy repair jobs. And a, and a rent increase that this board is proposing will kill that hope of these hardworking, struggling families, and please keep that in mind when you vote.
So we help a very marginalized, vulnerable, and low-income population. Our clients live below poverty levels, on public assistance, on food stamps, and are burdened to pay high rents. This demographic is a huge population in New York City. What we do as tenant attorneys on a daily basis is prevent evictions and assure that these individuals are living in habitable homes and not on the streets. Housing is a human right. Affordable housing is a human right. Habitable housing is a human right. And the fact that we have to have this conversation about ensuring that people are safe in their homes is enraging. Landlords benefit from the increase in rent because they can then deregulate the buildings, and that deprives people of rent, of the rights from rent-stabilized buildings. Just a last sentence, and in order to ensure and protect this human right, I wholeheartedly request all of you for a 0% increase.
Thank you. Jimmy Lopez?
Housing is a right. Right, right, right. Housing is a right.
Hello, I'm Jimmy Lopez. I'm, I'm a very proud New Yorker, born and raised in Brooklyn, and I'm a member of the Southwest Brooklyn Tenants Union. This city has had a housing crisis for many decades. At one time, there were many affordable neighborhoods in Brooklyn. When my parents first came here in 1952 to Brooklyn from Puerto Rico, there were many neighborhoods that were affordable, but not anymore. At that time, there was also a lot of small apartment buildings that were owned by the owners who lived in the apartment buildings, and there was not this antagonistic relationship between the owners of the buildings and the tenants. People actually got along. We had actual neighborhoods and real communities. The, the majority of New Yorkers, we are working class, lower-middle class, and we cannot even afford our own city. When I was growing up in the 60s and 70s, I was told, "Go to college, you, and help your community, and you'll have a good life in the city." No, people my age in their 50s and early 60s, we don't even have retirement funds, because 40 to 50, or even 60% of our income is going into housing. So there, I have no retirement fund, and I'm almost 60 years old. What future do I have here? Baby boomers that are like me, born and raised in the city, are going to wind up either homeless when we're senior citizens, on the street in shelters, you're gonna have to build then shelters for senior citizens. That's what's gonna happen. That this city has to be a city. Many of the people that I represent that are my friends and acquaintances are outreach workers, case managers, health educators, community organizers, working in the nonprofit field. We serve the most vulnerable of our communities. We serve youth, senior citizens, the poor, immigrants, people living with HIV/AIDS, and yet we cannot afford our own city. This, many, we have to have a city that is affordable for all New Yorkers, not just the wealthy. I am a proud New Yorker, and I represent many people that we are working class, we're lower-middle class, we're trying to make this a better city for everybody. Housing is a right for all of us, not just the wealthy. Housing is a right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Raphael Rutenberg here?
He was the attorney from the union service.
Ah, okay, thank you. Diane Aaronson, Alessandra Moley, and Lisa Mathis are the next speakers. Is Diane Aaronson here? Alessandra Moley?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. You have to have landlords in order to have tenants and vice versa, we need each other. If only we could coexist. My landlord unfortunately is bad news. When he bought the building, he didn't even look at any of the apartments, so we knew we were in for serious trouble. He has bought to collect rents, everyone is paying at least a thousand or more. This is not 300, 400 dollars. He is making money off these apartments, and he's not putting any money in the building, and the building is falling apart. Now, we chose to be in these apartments, we chose the charm of the apartments. We don't want that if we do get work, we get such bad work that they destroy the apartments, which is what they're doing. So it's basically a threat. You have to fight, you have to go to court to get any kind of services, and then when you, when you do, you have to worry about him hiring people off, literally off the street. So you are taking off work, you're in, you're in the house alone as a female, and I have a total stranger in the apartment who was hired off the street by the company that came into the apartment through the landlord. I mean, this is, this is dangerous. We've had situations where workers tapped into the gas pipes, and there were leaks, and they, the workers were honest enough to say, "Look, this is what we did, and our foreman wants us to cap it with the light fixture." I mean, these are realities now. The level is so bad, it's just downright dangerous. I have a hole on top of my toilet that leaks that's the size of the toilet tank itself, all right? Now, I've been living with this for three years. You can't turn to city housing, you can't turn to state either, because they drag things out, and they don't get anything fixed. So why should landlords continue to buy properties when they have violations? So why should landlords continue to buy properties when they have violations? I don't know. This should not be allowed. Also, buildings used to have supers that lived in there, they lived in the apartments, they, they, the landlord lost one rent in the buildings. This is no longer the case. Supers don't live in the buildings. These are extra rents that the landlords get. And then the supers don't deal with the reality of not having the right heat, not having the right, you know, the, the correct temperature of water and many other services that we should be getting. Fridges. Why should I, as a tenant, buy a fridge? Well, I should because when my fridge breaks down, which is from the 1970s, and I have to talk to it every once in a while because it leaks and it has all kinds of issues, uh, my landlord can buy any kind of fridge at any kind of price and I have a permanent increase in my rent. This is not fair. Windows. I have bamboo stakes to hold my windows up. I had to fight five years with housing state to get some of them fixed. And they're already broken.
Excuse me, could you wind up your presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
They're already broken. Uh, if, unless it's a capital improvement and they can rip out every window, including the good ones, they don't want to touch your windows. So we're all spending an enormous amount of time fighting, living in very bad conditions, and our rent keeps going up. It's not fair. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Lisa Mathis. I live at 80 New York Avenue. We have a tenants' association out building. I'm also a member of the Crown Heights Tenant Union. I'm here to put a face on what a rent stabilized tenant looked like. I work in the public sector. I work at surrogates court, which is right here on Borough Hall. I've been working in the court system for 20 years, yet for the past two years, I've went without heat because my landlord illegally ripped, ripped the boiler out of the building. My 80-year-old aunt was harassed for the past two and a half years to get her out of her apartment because he can charge $4,000 rent, which is what he's charging the other people in the building. But even beyond that, both of my sister-in-laws who work for Department of Ed, they're both teachers, have been teachers for over 30 years. One was displaced because of Sandy. She could not find an apartment in Brooklyn that she could afford. Now she lives at the edge of Rosedale, Queens and has to commute into Canarsie every day to teach her, her students. Um, I worked with her on Saturdays where she was giving her free time to train students and I see posters on the wall about students who are homeless and, and rather than finding them a place to live and preserving affordable housing, they're getting bused in so they could continue to the same school. That's a problem with this. My other sister-in-law, who also works as a, as a teacher for over 30 years, is in an apartment that now they're going to raise her rent over $800 because it was preferential rent. At this point, we're people who have been given back to the city, taking care of the court system, taking care of the children. We have done everything we're supposed to do. We went to college, we paid taxes, we're not taking anything from the government, we're paying back to the government, but now this city can't be affordable for us. We need you to make a good consideration and make sure that we get 0% or rent rollback. We need it in order to maintain this city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Elena Andrade, Alan Miller, and Lauren Springer. Elena Andrade? Andrade, okay.
Good evening. My name is Elena Andrade. I live in destabilized home. I pay over 50% of my income to it, but I don't come here to tell you what you've been hearing. Rent rates, fixture has to be fixed, cockroaches, rats, and all this. I'm not here for that, to tell. I'm going to tell you a story. You probably, all of you, saw the show, The Golden Girls, and the mother, when she had a point to tell her children, she says, let me tell you something. Sicily, 1460. Well, here I'm going to tell you my story. 2006, I moved from the West Coast to New York. People asked me, are you sure you want to go there? I say, yeah, it's time for me to move out and do a thing. Let me tell you my story. I lived in different world, part of the world. I lived in big cities, small cities, third world country. New York is no different than the third world country. The way people is living, I'm a tenant now, advocate, and the way my tenants tell me, the way they live is disgraceful. It's really disgraceful. One city that called my attention, I used to love to go to see because of their beaches, the food and all this, is Baja California, Tijuana. We used to go there very often, like I tell you, because of the beaches and the food and all this. People lived in the hills in cardboard boxes, but they lived better than New Yorkers, the poor people in New York. They don't have cockroaches, they don't have rats, they don't have moles, they don't have none of that. It's a shame that city like New York City. So, I mean, big and all over the world and people know, you know, they don't know how really living in New York City. I'm ready to move back to different state. Like I say, I like to go live everywhere, but New York City is a disappointment for me. And like all of you here have a dignity to live good, so everybody here have to live with dignity and pride and which they don't have that. Thank you. I hope, think about what everybody tell you today and think about what I just tell you about this third world country. And if, I would like you to go and visit the world country and you will see the difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. And thanks, thanks everybody for coming out and for those that have left, it was a large crowd tonight and for the people that were here, I think they represent at least 15 other people. Uh, I wasn't planning on speaking, but after hearing people speak tonight and I was compelled to, to lend my voice. I'm a member of the Southwest Brooklyn Tenant Union and I was compelled to join my tenants' union to support my fellow tenants. Uh, there's not much more I can add to this tonight except to say that if you're a landlord and you're not making money, you should not be a landlord. I mean, if you're a landlord in New York City and you're not making money, get out. Realistically. Where are your kids going to live? Are they, are they sharing a parent, uh, apartments at these rates? We shouldn't even use the word affordable. For whom? Once we leave those apartments, where are we going to go? Where can you go? Do, do they really need a rent increase? They're making money, they get tax payments, tax credits for empty apartments, full apartments. What more do they want? It's, it's a business. They know that. We know that. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lauren Springer and I'm a tenant leader with Catholic Migration Services. I'm originally a resident of Brooklyn where I grew up in public housing, but have been a rent regulated tenant of Queens for the past 22 and a half years. I wasn't able to attend the Queens public hearing because I was out of town, but I stand here before you today because I believe it's critical to add my voice to the chorus of tenants clamoring for a rent rollback. During my time as a rent regulated tenant, I've witnessed the impact that years of substantial rent increases have had on, on my community and on the city, including the loss of neighbors through unaffordable rents, the struggle of family members to secure affordable housing, and the changing character of, of neighborhoods through gentrification. While this board's preliminary vote encompassed rent increases, in actuality, this board should have been and should be seriously considering a rent rollback. So many tenants are severely rent burdened. One-third of New York City households are paying 50% or more of their income in rent and 25% of rent regulated tenants are living below the poverty line. Too many tenants are just one step away from homelessness, which has reached rampant levels. Although there were rent freezes for the past two years, many tenants weren't able to avail themselves because of timing issues with signing leases. Landlords still, however, saw increases in their profits due to MCI's preferential rents, individual apartment increases, and various tactics resulting in tenant displacement. The city cannot afford to keep bleeding rent stabilized apartments through rent increases because it only exacerbates the homelessness problem. Decisions that are being made today don't just affect the present, but the future as well. They determine and shape the course of what this city will look like in the years and generations to come and whether this city will be one in which only the rich can afford to li, to live. One of my favorite songs is Generations by Sarah Groves, the chorus of which goes, "Remind me of this with every decision. Generations will reap what I sow. I can pass on a curse or a blessing to those I will never know." I urge this board to pass on a blessing and vote for a rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next and last speakers are Kenneth Daniels and Jordan Cooper. Is Kenneth Daniels here?
Hi, my name is Jordan. Um, I am a tenant organizer in the Southwest Bronx with CASA and I live in Crown Heights in Brooklyn. Um, and I am here to tell you about my building. I live in a 16-unit building and a quarter of our apartments are rent stabilized. The other three quarters were all destabilized through illegal, illegal offers for buyouts. This winter, we had a lot of issues with our boiler that culminated in the fire department shutting off our boiler because it was emitting toxic levels of carbon monoxide so many times that the Department of Buildings put a notice on it that if anyone else turned the boiler on, they would be arrested. Uh, and we didn't have heat for the next two weeks, which were the coldest two weeks in January. Um, when they turned the heat back on, we had leaks in our radiators on almost every line that destroyed floors and ceilings. Because I'm also a tenant organizer in primarily rent stabilized buildings in the Southwest Bronx, I've seen the power that can be built within tenant communities. So I joined with my neighbors and we started a tenants' association with support from the Crown Heights Tenant Union and UHAB, and we began to demand improvements from our landlord. Within a month, something pretty incredible happened. Myself and the other tenants who are paying market rate rents in destabilized apartments got new radiators. Most of our repairs were made, um, and even the ones that were not related to the boiler drama. Meanwhile, the four rent stabilized apartments did not get new radiators. They didn't get any repairs, not the repairs resulting from the boiler, nor the repairs that they'd been asking for, for years prior to that. Why did that happen? Why did my leak get fixed months ago? And why are my rent stabilized neighbors still waiting for repairs that they asked for years before I even moved to the building? What is it about me that makes me different from my rent stabilized neighbors? My landlord is clearly discriminating against my rent stabilized neighbors and that's why I'm demanding that you vote for a rent rollback. Not only so that you can help my neighbors afford to stay in the apartments that they've lived in for over 40 years, um, but also so that they can continue to have the right to call 311 and report dangerous conditions to HPD and organize with their neighbors so that they can get the repairs that they need without having to be worried about being offered a lease next year, without having to be worried about being evicted for no reason. They need to have these rights that they only can have through rent stabilize, through rent stabilization because it gives them the right to renew their lease every year so they don't have to be worried about causing trouble for their landlord advocating for their rights. Um, so after two years, a rent freeze is clearly not enough to undo the decades of rent hikes that have and are obliterating long-term communities in New York City, and it's definitely not enough to correct the enormous power imbalance that exists between tenants and landlords. So what do we want?
Rental back!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Rental back!
When do we want it?
Now!
Thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes the testimony. Thank you all for your participation. Um, I believe, um, there should be a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.